Well, first of all, there were a couple of people in our game who came in with nicknames. I didn't know who they were, but I found out that Purple was Mrs. Peterson. And Purple, Purple started out on top and then Purple disappeared. Purple disappeared in the running. I'm like, Purple, did you fall asleep? Because everybody was saying to Purple. But anyway, Purple redeemed herself and Purple came in third. And I was glad to see that. I want this person to identify herself because it was Mama Bear. Now, Mama Bear started out slow, went into first place, back and forth. So Mama Bear was really doing a great job. So Mama Bear was doing a great job. But then Becky, and I know, because I asked about Mrs. Nevaz, Becky came from third, up the first, down the second, back up the first, and maintained her first place position till the end. So Becky Nevaz is our number one winner in the green room. Done a fantastic job. And the reason I ask because Becky had 6,438 points. Mama Bear had 5,845 points. And Purple, after she woke up, had 5,041 points. So those scores, those scores were pretty high. And that's why I asked, did you, did you keep the scores for those individuals? Because I'm thinking the green room people had the highest scores in the competition. If you could tell me otherwise, Mrs. McLendon, then I'm going to say we had the, we had the top team. So we, we first team over here.
Dr. Potte, who had the highest number again? What was the number?
Becky Nevaz had 6,438.
Okay, because Mr. Dave said 6,408. So.
Mr. Blake, don't come in late and over there manipulating the scores now.
Wait a minute. Okay, wait a minute. I'm going to have to brush, brush both of your bubbles. Okay?
Now, Mrs. Peters, you know what they call this in assessment? If you don't give me the scores when you first ask, you can't come back two minutes, five minutes later with your scores. It's too late.
I had to look for it. Mr. Shaw, let me, let me get a drum roll. Okay? Mr. Shaw had 7,000. With 98 smackaroo points. Okay?
Excuse me.
He had the manual at home he was studying last night.
Excuse me, members of the board. I think it's only appropriate that I ask for a recount. Well, congratulations, everyone. It was, it was great. I enjoyed that. I enjoyed my team did a great job.
Yes, I hope everybody walked away with learning a little bit more about our district and our township. And hopefully some of those questions were a little trick question. So you definitely had to read through it quickly within that 20-second window. So that was our icebreaker for this evening. Now, as we move through, were there any particular questions that anybody wanted to know the correct answer to? No? Okay. So as we move to our second part of our agenda with our agenda part, we're going to hear from our board committee chairpersons. Remember, board chairs, we have five minutes to share something exciting or something new or any information with our community right now. So we're going to start with our athletic committee chairperson, Mr. Shaw.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Mr. Shaw.
Good evening, Mrs. Pitts. As everybody knows, I'm the chairperson of the athletic committee. We work side, the other committee members are Ms. McLendon and Mr. Blake. We work side by side with Dr. Potte and Mr. Whitaker and the rest of the athletic staff to collaborate with, making sure what's going on so we can put out the information to the community at board meetings and wherever else we can to make sure that everybody's up to date, especially during the pandemic. Where, and New Jersey State Interscholastic Athletic Association has come up with some pretty eventful information on sports. From the fall in soccer and football and volleyball especially took a sabbatical till, I think it just stood back up. And even into the winter when basketball got delayed and winter track was delayed till it just started on March, February 1st. And basketball season and all the, with all the COVID. So we've been, we're trying to be as transparent as we possibly can. We've been trying to meet the third Thursday of every month. So that way we can put out as much information as we can to try to align ourselves with NJSIAA. So that way we have as much information because it's kind of hard to keep aligned with that information. They put out information various times. And Mr. Whitaker, Dr. Potte have done a great job trying to keep the athletic committee aware of what's going on. So we can make sure we put out up-to-date information because trying to keep our student athletes aware of what's going on. And also to keep us up to date on the who's who of what's going on of our student athletes that have graduated. We all know about Z King and what she's doing. We all know about Jordan Burrows and what he's doing. And about our athletes that are going on to college that graduate every year. So we, we like to try to market them as much as possible. So everybody in the community knows what we're putting out as far as our student athletes. Right now, that's all I have for the committee.
Great job. Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Next we'll have our citizens advisory committee, Ms. Rita Martin.
Well, good evening all and welcome. Hope everybody enjoyed the game. I'm just going to give you a little bit of background of the citizens advisory committee. The Winslow Township Board of Education believes in the active involvement and participation of Winslow Township community in advancing the philosophy, mission, and goals of this district. The Board of Education Citizens Advisory Ad hoc Committee is formed by the board for the purpose of seeking advice, recommendations, and providing widespread involvement in issues affecting the district. As the district grows and change, as the district grows and changes, the citizen advisory committee enables the board to increase involvement in the school district and receive input from the community on key issues that emphasize a collaborative and innovative learning partnership approach. The citizen advisory committee is comprised of community members appointed by the board to serve for a term of one year with an option to renew granted by the board. And I would like to introduce you to our citizen advisory members. I noticed that, I believe I saw two of them here tonight. They are Carolyn Carter, Megan Byer, who is our co-chair, Shawna Hart, Danielle Hunter, Michelle Kane, Ian Moran, who is our chairperson, Joe Thomas, and for the first time ever, we were able to have a member from Chiselhurst, Miriam Smith Trout. So that is all that I have, Ms. McLendon, for the citizens advisory.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Now we're going to go to our education committee with Ms. Peterson.
Good evening, everyone. I hope that you enjoyed the game. I was a little slow, but I think it was because I needed some glasses. But anyhow, I'm delighted that as of March the 16th, and let me first share with the committee. Mrs. Thomas is on the committee, Mrs. Martin is on the committee, and Dr. Quakamo. With that, I want to share that Dr. Quakamo has a unique background. She was a special education teacher and then elevator herself through. Mrs. Martin, she was also special education. Ms. Thomas still has two students left in Winslow and one in college. That she brings a different perspective. Myself, I'm pre-K to 20, which means high, all the way through elementary to college. So just want to let you know the expertise that we have and what we bring. I think we all bring passion and commitment to making certain that all students receive the best possible education. So with that in mind, as of yesterday, which was the 16th, hybrid enrollment, 1,204. Anticipated enrollment for the fourth marking period, because we have received requests, 473 additional. Making a grand total, going into the fourth marking period, if everything stays the same, we will have 1,667. That represents a little less than a third of our, a little more than a third of our population, school population is coming back to Winslow. And that's great. I asked, because I looked at different websites and I asked different individuals, what was the welcoming factor coming back this year? Because every year Winslow principals and staff do an excellent job in making certain that our students and their parents are welcomed the first day of school. So they had some creative COVID safety reminders that were made out of different leaves to say social distancing. I prefer to say physical distance and social connection. That's what our population needs, that social connection. They had marquee welcoming signs. They had classroom activities to welcome them back. They had school spirit day where staff wore their favorite school T-shirt. They had welcome back bulletin boards. And of course, we could not go without Read Across America with their different hats, crazy socks, crazy hairstyles, and Act of Kindness. So I'd like to thank the principals, teachers, staff, everyone that helped in making our students welcome back into the environment. We're glad that they're doing a lot of great things. And with everyone's help, our students will still continue to thrive. That's the end of my report.
I thank you, Ms. Peterson. Next we'll have equity, equity committee report. Mr. Blake?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. My name is Larry Blake and I am the chairperson of the Equity Equality Committee, which has been newly formed as of this school year. The team members are myself, chairperson Julie Peterson, and Kelly Thomas. The purpose of the committee is this committee shall concern itself with matters of fair treatment relating to diversity, equality, and inclusion of the district's employees, students, and staff. This committee also shall receive, I mean, also shall review and discuss situations, conditions, and concerns in these areas and shall make recommendations with the area of its responsibility to the board. So basically what we're doing, our, our mission is to make sure that people are being treated fairly, regardless of what they believe in, regardless of what they do. As of right now, I have been working with Terry Lewis, who is our New Jersey School Board Association consultant. And she's going to be looking into trainings that are very similar to what we did last board meeting about what a board member is. Hopefully it'll be more interactive, but that is the goal. So at least we can kind of have an eye out what's going on, not only in the district, but in the community. And that concludes my report.
I thank you, Mr. Blake. Next we have operations committee, Ms. Dredin.
Yes, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Ms. Dredin.
How are you today? Good evening. The operations committee meets monthly to review the areas of finance, maintenance, transportation, food servers, and capital projects. Our members are provided selected bills for their review. The number of status of uniform applications are also reviewed monthly. The committee makes recommendation to the board when needed. Finance, the committee makes sure that the district develops, adopt, and follow a budget calendar to make certain that deadlines are met. Regular updates are reported to the committees. During the annual audit, any areas of concern, possible audits, findings are brought to the attention of the committee. Maintenance, the committee heard and support and the emergency need for the recommissioning and certification of the HVAC system, along with the install installation of bipolar irrigation units to maintain the safety of their buildings. Transportation, the committee support the need of the transportation department by maintaining the fleet and responding to the need of the drivers and the staff. Food servers, food service, or on occasions, members of the committee were provided samples of certain meals selections before they were introduced to the schools, ice cream and bento boxes. Members have also been invited to participate as a judge on the future chef competition. The committee also support the summer feeding program, the grab and go lunch. Capital projects, the status of prior years, current and potential future projects are reported on and discussed at every meeting. Projects that had recently or are nearly completions are, in addition to the high school with 10 classrooms, including three science, two offices, and a large meeting space. The installation of an elevator in the high school, renovation to the high school auditorium, the construction of the pole barn to protect district equipment, and innovation to the current office. Also, the demo of a modular and expansion to the park lot in the middle school. The construction of the greenhouse in the middle school. The project is ongoing. And the installation of the new public address and blue point alert system in every school. The new protective meeting netting at the high school basketball field. And also the site improvement at the school three to address the drainage issue in the parking lot. The parking lot expansion of school two and the resigned, resigned of the flow of the traffic at school six. And also the project to begin during the summer of 21, 2021, the replacement of the unit ventilators which produce heat only with new units, which provide both heat and air condition at the high school. Proposed future projects, the replacement of circulation pumps at the school one through four and the middle school. The new security system at the middle school and high school. The new fire alarm system at school one, two, three, five, and six. Install new DDC controls in the air handlers at school six. Painting of the exterior of the middle school, painting of the interior trim at the high school. Painting the lot improvements at the middle school and administration building, and resurfing the tennis court at the high school. And that includes, concludes my, what I would like to state about the operations committee. And on our operations committee is myself as chair, Ms. Cheryl Pitts, our president, John Shaw, and I believe is Cynthia Moore. And that concludes, I think I might got one left wrong.
Just, just Mrs. Boyle.
Well, of course, Ms. Boyle is our main character. We can't forget, I'm so sorry, Mrs. Boyle. Can't forget you because you are, you are dynamite.
But thank you, Ms. Dredin. Thank you for the, thank you for the operations. Policy committee, Madam President, Ms. Pitts?
Policy committee. As board members, that's what we're all about, policy. The policy committee meets every fourth Thursday. The members of our policy committee are Ms. Dredin, Ms. Martin, and Ms. Moore. In addition to that, the committee, the policy committee, as well as all of our committees, are always attended by one, one or two members of the administrations. So with the policy committee, we are always, always in attendance, we will have Dr. Quakamo, who as you know is our assistant superintendent, and Mr. Dion Davis, who is the director of human resources. And together, we sit and take a look at the policies that come into this district from the Department of Education. At the end of the day, the basic duty of, of, of the policy committee is that we oversee and review the updates of policies and we make recommendations within these areas. Now, these policies you see are not just our district policies, but there are policies that come to us from the state and also the federal government. Because just as a car or a truck or any vehicle runs on tires, a district runs on its policy. Because all policies affect every area, every aspect of a district, from curriculum to, to the staff, to administration, to facilities, to instructions. It all runs according to policy. And what is most important for our district and any district is that we keep updated with our policies. Now, the policies that we have to administer, again, come to us from the state and off federal government. And when they do come in, they come in marked either with an M or an R. Any policy that comes in that's marked with an M says that policy is mandated. As a district, we don't have a choice. The state is saying, this is the policy for this particular area and this is how you will administer it. Then we have policies that come in that are marked with an R. And that R means that these policies are recommended, which the state is basically saying, okay, Winslow, this is what we recommend, how you handle this particular area in your district. But it is just a recommendation. If once you review it, you find that it doesn't work for you, you, you don't have to go forward with it. But the policies that are mandated are just that they are mandated. And so the policy committee, again, reviews the various policies that come in. And then there's a process. Because just like any of our other committees, once that committee makes a decision, it brings it to the full board. And what the committee basically says to the full board is this, the particular area that we're dealing with, this is what we recommend to the board. And so any policy that we recommend to the board has to go through a procedure. It has to be read at least twice. That is at two consecutive regular board meetings. Why? So that the public can also take a look at what policies have come in and what policies we're going to begin to implement. And so that is the process. And so the policy does not become a real, living, working, active thing until the whole board makes a decision, along with knowing that the public has also had an opportunity to see the policies. And once the board makes a decision, then it becomes written in stone. And so if, if you are the public and most of you, or perhaps several of you probably know how to access our policy, when you go into our website, you go under the Board of Education, yes, and there's a drop down that says policy. And thank you, Ms. McLendon, because she's changing, bringing it up. You go into our website and you go under the board, the drop down, you come down to where it says board policy, you click on that board policy. And what you will get is a list of our entire board policy. Now, we use the language of board policy, but actually we have, as you can see, our policies number up to about the 9,000 series. So when we say our policy manual, that's an overall general umbrella statement that encompasses all of our policies. And if anyone is interested in accessing or finding out about a particular situation, you can access it on our website by going up and simply typing in a keyword. If you type in the keyword and you hit search, then that search engine will then take you to the particular policy that addresses your concern. So especially to the, to the public, because all of our board members are familiar with it, you can always access our policies on our website. So there you have it. That is the length and the breadth of our policy committee commitment.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam President. Very well said. I don't have marketing committee on here, but I definitely want to take this opportunity to introduce to the public in case you don't know who the marketing team is for the Board of Education. Ms. Cindy Moore, Mr. Larry Blake, Dr. Potte, and yours truly, Abina McLendon. So we are the marketing team for the district. And I just wanted to introduce the team because they've been doing a fantastic job. Thank you. Also, before we go into our question, comments section of it, I want to share with the community, we have.
Excuse me, Ms. McLendon, just, just, just one more committee? And we don't, this, this committee doesn't really get a lot of the public's opinion, but it is a negotiations committee?
Okay, Madam President, okay.
Okay.
Ms. Peterson, did you want to say something about that? I know we had kind of discussed it and you said you didn't have anything, but is there something you want to add to it?
Just introduce the committee. On our chair on the committee is Mrs. Dredin and Mrs. Martin. Those are members of the negotiating committee.
And it should be stated that the negotiations committee is basically headed up by our solicitor, Mr. Howard Long. And he's the one that carries through that negotiations committee. The negotiations committee does just what the term says. When the contracts with our employees, our WTEA and our WTAA, those negotiations are handled by the negotiations committee. So what I would just end by saying, that I hope the public has gotten a very good view of exactly what constitutes this board. And in listening to it, I'm sure that you've probably heard that as board members, we don't just come every second and fourth Wednesday before you for a meeting. If you notice, several of our, almost all of our board members are either either chair or committee or they are on one or two of the committees. So it's very likely, and I think this is important, very likely, and I think it's important for the public to know that as board members, it's very likely that we're on the job every single week. Not just the second and fourth week that you see us, because those are the meetings that we come before you in the public. But we have committee meetings, we have training. So being a board member is, is more than just a notion, but we do it because we care about our children and our community. Okay?
Just one more comment, represented from the administration that's on the negotiating team is Dr. Quakamo, Mr. Davis, and Ms. Boyle.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. And thank you, Ms. Pitts, for summing up all of our committees and the vital parts that we play within the district. So one of the things I want to mention to the community is that we have a board member who is also a part of the legislative committee team. Which if you don't know what that means, that means that Winslow has a seat at the table when it comes down to getting pertinent information regarding legislative laws or bills that are being passed or being presented to the table, you know, regarding our children, our students, our districts. So I want to introduce him, but also give him an opportunity just to share something from the legislative table. Because like I said, a lot of people don't know, but being as though that we're Winslow, we're on the map now with the legislative committee because we have representation that represents Winslow. So Mr. Shaw, could you give us something as the legislative committee member, part of Winslow Township Board of Education? We can't hear you, Mr. Shaw. You're muted.
On March, on March 6th, I was officially appointed the Legislative District for New Jersey State. Legislative District Four, New Jersey State School Boards Association, uh, Member, um, which allows, uh, gives me the voting privilege to advocate on behalf of not only Winslow, but the, uh, New Jersey State School Board, um, through Legislative District Four, uh, with Donald Norcross, um, Paul Moriarty, Fred Madden, um, and Gabriel Mascheria, amongst other, uh, politicians to, on the behalf of Winslow and other school districts in the state of New Jersey. Um, some of the big things that are coming across that are in committees or getting ready to pass through legislation or that New Jersey State School Boards are advocating for, um, are new HIB laws, um, that are possibly going to be changing that are big, uh, for, for the state of New Jersey. Um, there's student gap, uh, legislation that'll be coming through probably within the next couple of months. Um, we all know about the American Rescue Plan that just got passed. That's a big thing because our, as Dr. Potte spoke about last week, um, there's a big financial package that will be coming through to help us out. Um, there's a bunch of different things that are going, that have happened in the next couple of weeks. I had just got sent links the other day that I'm going to be sending to school board members. If anybody in the community really wants to, um, email me or what, uh, send me a message, go ahead because I can send you the links for the, uh, bill numbers or whether they're in the Assembly or the State, uh, State Senate. Um, I will be happy to answer a question. If I don't have the answer, I will reach out to somebody that can get you the answer. Um, and we will find out whatever I can. And if you have something that you need me to reach out to one of the local politicians for or anybody, I will be more than happy to reach out to them and advocate on your behalf and the students of Winslow's behalf. So, that's pretty much what I have on that. Now, Ms., you're muted, Ms. McClendon.
I'm sorry. I wasn't sure if there was something else you wanted to mention?
Yes, um, for the past few weeks, um, Ms. McClendon and I have had the honor of reviewing and going through the Camden County Teacher of the Year, um, applications with past County, Camden County Teacher of the Year and State Teacher of the Year, uh, winners, um, and to other, uh, uh, educators to, uh, vote on this year's Camden County Teacher of the Year. Now, we're not at liberty to say anything else other than that, but I would like to say that we, if this was an extreme honor for myself, I won't speak on behalf of Ms. McClendon, but when, when I was asked, my first thing was like, oh, boy, this is going to be huge. Um, and the, I, 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 I'm speechless now because it's just like the biggest honor in the world because the, the teachers that we got to read packets for were just absolutely outstanding. And I know we have teachers in Winslow that are absolutely amazing and that could rise up to the same level. So, any teacher in Winslow and anybody that wants to nominate a teacher in Winslow, please, for next year, we, you know, I, I hope to get asked to do it again, or any board member gets asked to do it again, because this was like a trial run to see how board members would do, um, judging the, uh, Teacher of the Year at the county level. So, nominate teachers, teachers, get your applications in for Winslow because you guys all rock. And our administration, they, 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 they know it and they can, they'll, you know, I've, I'm just, this was such a great thing and a privilege for me. Ms. McClendon, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, just to add a couple of things, what Mr. Shaw was saying, we know that Winslow has some awesome, fantastic, dynamic, not duplicating, you know, we know that we have some awesome teachers here. So, we definitely would like to see Winslow definitely in some of those, uh, get those applications in for next year. Um, they can be nominated at the building level by anyone, community, parents. So, if you think that one of your teachers is the best teacher, nominate them. And we can nominate on all different buildings. We have eight schools. We should see eight applications for next year for Camden County Teacher of the Year. And the one thing, the person that wins Camden County Teacher of the Year goes up to the state level to run against for, uh, State, um, Teacher of the Year. So, we definitely are going to hopefully push and promote this because we know that Winslow has a good seed of teachers and we definitely want to see more of us represented at that time. So, that's all I have to say about that. So, we're going to be looking for you, Winslow.
Yes, we are.
Next, we're going to have our question and answer and comment, um, section done. And, you know, a lot of this, uh, the marketing team, a lot of the town hall, um, took a lot of effort and work and definitely a lot of, um, feedback and work on behalf of our Superintendent, Dr. Potte. So, you know, I definitely want to thank him because I know I had him going from, you know, learning some different styles of technology, also being able to run the Kahoot game. So, I did put a lot of, um, fun, I don't want to say pressure.
Pressure, it was pressure.
Excitement and anxiety on him about the town hall. But at this time, we're going to open up for our question and answer period. Um, just a couple, um, housekeeping rules or how we're going to run the question and answer period because we want to make sure that every ques- question is answered or addressed and make sure no questions are left, um, on the table without being acknowledged. So, uh, one of our, uh, committee members, which is Ms. Moore, she will actually help and support Dr. Potte with the question and answer period. So, I'm going to ask that if you have a question, a comment, a concern, a kudos, a praise report, whatever, that you use the raise hand feature. So, if you look at the bottom of your screen, there's a smiley face for reactions. If you click on it, it says raise hand, you'll be able to raise your hand. And if you, um, raise your hand, then Ms. Moore can see you and she will address you so that you can address your question, um, on the floor. So, please, use that raise hand feature. Start putting your hands up now if you've got questions. So, Ms. Moore can go in order according to the hands and then your questions will be answered. So, that, that way, we can do it in, um, order and, uh, do it efficiently. And we definitely don't want to miss anybody's question this evening. So, please, don't utilize the chat on the WebEx because we're not monitoring the web, the chat on the WebEx area. Use the raise hand feature. Um, if anyone is calling in, Ms., I see you, Ms. Boyle, I'm about to come over to you next. If you should get a question on the YouTube or if you could just, you know, jump in and let, uh, Dr. Potte or Ms. Moore know and then we'll address those as well. So, we want, don't want to miss anybody's questions, but we want to make sure we do it where as though is effective. All right? Dr. Potte is all yours.
Good evening, everyone. And at this time, we will address any questions you may have. So, who was first?
Nobody so far.
I was about to start singing the Jeopardy music, right?
Yeah, yeah, right. I mean, no, I see no hands.
Oh, there you go, Ms. Moore.
There we go. Chisa, you can unmute yourself.
Hi. Hi, Cindy. I just wanted to give a shout out to Ms. Wonguma, who said that she will follow up with me when, um, the option came to open up again because I was one of the parents who missed the, um, registration to get my kids back in school, where she actually followed up with me the same day that it opened up. And I was having issues signing my kids up and she had somebody go through it with me through the middle school and high school. So, shout out to you, Ms. Wonguma. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, let me, let me just also piggyback on that for the community at large. Um, signups are now available on our website, uh, started on Monday. The signup timeline will be until Friday, the twenty-sixth at four P.M. The numbers that Ms., uh, Peterson mentioned earlier in the meeting are just those individuals who've signed up as of yesterday. So, you still have a week and a half of the signup. And I encourage everyone, please, register your child because we only have one week before we go on spring break. And then when we return, uh, we need to make sure all that information has been tabulated. People will receive their transportation information if you request it. So, a lot of work needs to be done in the process. So, please, if you intend to register your child for the hybrid model, uh, please go to the website of the school in which your child will attend and register your child. If you have more than one child and they attend different schools, you have to go to each school's website to register your child. Um, we want to eliminate one of the issues we had earlier, uh, where the parent would only go to the one website and thought she was registering, uh, all of her children at the one school. And it will eliminate that. So, we'll know that each child who's being registered is going to attend that particular school. So, please, uh, take advantage of it, uh, as we move forward for the planning process. We appreciate your participation.
Thank you, Chisa. Next.
Also, if you've done, if you finish answering your question, please lower your hand just so that we don't call on you again and you don't have a question.
Sonia Inman. You, you, okay, there you go.
Um, I just had a question about the, um, recommendation for utilizing the money from the federal government to do the air conditioning and havoc system for the, in all the buildings for the district. I believe Dr. Potte was indicating that you were recommending to the board to use that, those funds to do the building's air conditioning. Um, I'm trying to understand if that was approved, how would that impact the, um, budget that was just proposed? And also, how would it impact the rest of the funds that, um, the federal government is giving to go towards the other, um, services that the money would be for as well?
Yes, uh, first of all, I just want to make clear that, uh, my recommendation was just that, um, there has not been a decision made, um, to use those monies or a portion of those monies uh, for the HVAC systems in all of the schools. So, that has not been decided. Uh, those monies were not a part of the budget that was presented here tonight. Um, you cannot plan for money you don't have. So, until that money arrives, it has not been addressed at all. Um, the same question was asked of me, Ms. Inman, on Monday, and I told the parent that I would bring that information with me tonight so you have a clear understanding as to what, um, Congressman Norcross said to us as to how that money is to be used. Uh, as I mentioned that night, we, eleven point six million dollars, um, was projected to or estimated to come to the district. Twenty percent of that money, uh, provided by the American Rescue Plan is intended to be used to address and remediate learning loss among students. The remaining funds can be used for the following: upgrading and repairing ventilation systems, implementing social distancing, purchasing personal protective equipment, and investing in support staff to care for students' health and well-being. So, all of the money, when we receive it, cannot be used just for the HVAC systems. Um, we anticipate that, uh, it's an opportunity for us to use a portion of it, but the other portions of the monies will be used, of course, to enhance the educational programs. And no decision at this time has been made on what will exactly, uh, how that money will be exactly used.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mrs. Moore, while we're waiting, I just want to mention one other caveat to the registration for the hybrid program. If your child is in the hybrid program right now, you do not have to re-register him or her. So, if they're already in hybrid and you want them to stay in the hybrid program, you do not have to re-register them, uh, for the fourth marking period. Also, the third marking period ends on the fourteenth or fifteenth of, of April. We are not going to start the fourth marking period for the new students who are in the hybrid program until April the nineteenth, which is that Monday. So, the new, so, everyone who's in the hybrid program now will still continue to attend school, but everyone who signs up for the fourth marking period will not begin their, uh, face-to-face instruction until April the nineteenth. So, we start, uh, that Monday in a new week. So, I just wanted to clarify that in event, uh, there was any confusion about re-registering children who are presently in the program.
Thank you. The next, the next participant is Erica Wallace.
Hi, good evening. Um, just a quick question, um, because I, I got kicked out of the WebEx. So, I feel like I caught the end of your answer to someone else, which is about filling out the forms for anyone, um, changing or converting to hybrid for the next marking period. So, I guess my first question is, if I let her teachers know and I called the school on Monday to let them know because I wasn't able to physically go in, um, do I still need to fill out the form online?
Yes.
Okay. So, yes, still do it anyway?
Yes, because that, that way, we have, um, a paper trail. Uh, we have that information available, um, so that in the event, something comes up, well, you didn't register, we don't have your name. So, I think, uh, because you did call in, that's great. Uh, but go and register anyway. That way, we have a confirmation, uh, in the system, okay?
Yes, thank you. And just one other question. So, um, I know, and, and things may have changed because I remember back in September or end of August, we were talking about, um, considering going back. And when they decided that they were going to split and do a hybrid in the beginning, um, they were talking about children with IEP going each day, um,
Okay, excuse me, caller, I'm sorry, uh, Ms. Wallace. I, I can't hear your question because I'm getting some feedback from someone else. Uh, excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, would you please mute your mics?
Okay, there you go.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Wallace, I couldn't hear what you were saying. I'm sorry.
No problem. So, in the beginning, I remember they previously mentioned children that had an IEP or any type of spe- special services would be going each day, that the school was open with, obviously, with the exception of that Wednesday. Um, but now that we're going back, um, when I spoke to the school, they said that she would only be going two days out of the week. So, is, did something change or is that just a mistake and they didn't register that she had an IEP?
Um, I, I will, it, it wasn't a mistake. And at this point, um, I think we were trying to take at least the first couple of weeks, um, um, to get settled. And that four days, if you can recall, in our plan, it spoke to the students of the greatest need. So, we wanted to address the most needy students first, and that's what those four days for. So, if they were considered, uh, one of those children in that category, they were the ones who would get the first option to come in four days a week. It was not for all, uh, special needs children or children with an IEP, I'm sorry.
Right, right. Okay. All right. So, it's just that she maybe doesn't meet that criteria. So, it's probably just specifically for her.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you. Uh, next, uh, Ms. Megan Byer.
Good evening. Um, my question was, my kids are already hybrid. I want to keep them hybrid. But if I'm wanting to look into the possibility of having them take the bus rather than me driving them to school, how do I go about doing that?
Just contact the school and, um, uh, you should make those arrangements now, uh, so that at the fourth marking period, are you referring to the fourth marking period?
For, yeah, I just figured that would be the easiest time to make that.
It would be the transitional period. Yes, just contact the school, uh, so that they can, uh, communicate that to the Transportation Department. So, whichever school it is, if you would call them tomorrow and let them know so that we can, uh, make arrangements for that. All right?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm waiting. Ms. McCoy, do you have anyone?
No, we do not have that, um, uh, what is it? That, the waiting room set up. I don't have anybody that's called in.
Okay. Okay. Okay, I don't see anyone.
Well, Mrs., you have one, Mrs. Moore?
No, I don't.
Okay. Before we close out, I, I just wanted to make an additional statement, and that is, for all the parents, and I know everyone will clearly understand what I'm saying, let's be mindful that we are still in a pandemic here in the state of New Jersey. The governor gave his state of address for an update on the pandemic. And we need to make sure that everyone still be vigilant and do all the things that are necessary to stay safe. More people are vaccinated in the state, have received vaccines in the state of New Jersey than we've ever had before, of course. Three point one million. The target is four point seven million. But don't let your guard down. You, you still have to make sure that you continue to wear your mask, social distance. And more importantly, the reason I'm mentioning this, when your children are not in school and when they go home and parents, you still have to be vigilant and do all the things that's going to keep you safe. The variants are changing. There's a new variant that just arrived in New Jersey. It's allegedly supposed to be more effective in the spread than the previous variants. So I just want to keep it in front of you that we still have to do everything we've been continuously doing to keep ourselves safe. And, you know, in your personal, private lives, we are still asking you to do the same kinds of things. Some people, of course, have let their guard down and they're going out to parties and things like that. And those are the ways the spread continues. And we're just asking everyone, of course, you have the choice to live your life as you see fit, and I can respect that. But let's continue to do the things that got us to where we are as the governor is asking us to do. We're going to do everything we can to keep our children and staff safe in the schools. We're going to maintain the social distancing. We're going to continue to wear masks. We're going to continue to make sure people wash their hands and everything that needs to be done. But please, let's not let our guard down. Let's stay vigilant and doing the things that got us to this point, and I think we'll be all right. So working together, this is the only way we're going to be successful. I don't know what the future holds for, where we are, what we're going to look like in September. We have no indication at this point because it's day to day. But I do want to thank everyone, the staff in the schools, our parents, because at this point, we've been very, very fortunate in minimizing any effects in our school district. So I want to preach, I want to thank you, and I appreciate your support and how it has been conducted thus far. So thank you very much.
Okay, we do have another participant, Tina Marshall.
Hi, I just have a question in regards to eighth grade activities. You know, my daughter is full remote, but you know, there hasn't been any type of information. Are we looking at anything or is that, like, what, what's the plan for the eighth graders?
I, I cannot speak definitively at this point, but I do know Mrs. Juan Guma and her staff have been planning and looking at some options for that eighth grade class. At this point, if you have not received anything, I would anticipate that Ms. Juan Guma will be putting something out as soon as possible. But I also will encourage all parents, if you have any questions about eighth grade, call Mrs. Juan Guma. The last conversation I had with Ms. Juan Guma was about a virtual ceremony at this point for their promotional exercise. But again, keep in mind, it, it can change from day to day. There's just no way we can really know how things are going to be come June. But there are some planning that's taking place. So please, reach out to Mrs. Juan Guma, and I'm quite sure she'd be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Ms. McLendon.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. I have a question. Dr. Potteau, since you were just talking about the promotion for the eighth grade, it made me think about our high school students. So I know we are preparing for a prom, but I did want to know, right now, the stipulations for the prom, I believe I heard or read that it's only for our seniors. So anybody outside of Winslow, like if someone had a senior somewhere else or, you know, wanted to bring their own date with them, we're not able to do that. Is it be, is, is, is that the reason for that? Is it because of the occupancy, occupancy number, the number of people that can attend the location, the facility? And if possible, as it gets closer, will that number change if things open up more? But I know there was a lot of talk about that where the seniors weren't able to, you know, bring anybody outside to the prom. It had to be just our students?
Well, first of all, capacity is number one. And for example, if you can only have a hundred and fifty students attending, then that may very well boil down to just the seniors themselves. As I mentioned earlier, this entire situation is a moving target. We are planning and looking at every scenario. And if the spread within the community, it continues to lower and the governor continues to allow increased incapacity, which will dictate how many we can have, then we can make changes accordingly. But at this point, Mr. McLendon, it's, it's all boils down to the number of students we'll be able to allow to attend under those circumstances. But we will continue to work with Mr. Morella and Mrs. McLendon. He probably can give us even more details and specifics because he's dealing with it on a regular basis. But capacity and venue and whether or not the restrictions are going to be changed would definitely have an impact. But the clock is ticking, Mrs. McLendon, you know, it gets closer and closer. And at some point, we're going to have to make a decision. But right now, it, it's still open-ended.
And I, I understand it. I just was wondering because I know, you know, if I put myself in their shoes, you know, I would hope that, you know, I would be able to bring my own, my dance partner, you know, for the prom. So I was just wondering, like, if things change and, you know, and it opens up more, hopefully, we will have that small window of opportunity for those who wanted to bring somebody to be able to, but only if the CDC guidelines.
Yes, yes. And again, safety is first and foremost, Mrs. McLendon, and we're not going to put these young people or the staff in a situation where we're trying to accommodate and appease and just overlook what we shouldn't be doing and put everybody's health in jeopardy. So we will continue to monitor that, and we will continue to keep everyone posted. And I'm quite sure Mr. Morella will continue to meet with the student leadership at the school because I know they are very much interested in this entire situation.
Great, thank you.
So we don't have a hand raised, but I was, I'm actually surprised that no one brought this up. So I was just curious about whether any, any of the parents had any feedback about how, how hybrid is going so far. It's like the third week, and I was just wondering how it's going.
Well, it varies from building to building, Mrs. Moore. The high school will have their set of issues, which will be totally different than, let's say, school one or school four. As far as we are concerned, we are better again today than we were last week. My tech team is in the schools every day now, just working with individual teachers. So we're improving. I've had communication with some parents, but very few. But at this point, our educational process and instructional programs have improved. So at this point, overall, I would say things are going much, much better than they have, and we will continue to improve. Let me just say this. The only way we have been able to address these issues, we had to bring everyone in. And that's the only way you'll know what works and what doesn't work. At this point, in preparation as we move forward with fourth marking period, of course, we anticipate more children. We don't know what we look like in September. So we have to continue to address these issues so we can, you know, become better at delivery of services. We're much, much better today than we've ever been since we've been back. And we will continue to improve. The tech department is working every day in the buildings. So I think we're in a much better place today than we've been when we first started. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You know, Dr. Potteau, I think it's an interesting statistic that in February, when we were discussing returning in our hybrid model, and I believe several questions were asked with regards to exactly how many parents contacted with regards to children coming back. And at that time, I believe the figure was about thirteen hundred. But if I'm, if I heard correctly, Ms. Peterson, when she gave her report this evening, when she spoke about the education committee, I think she indicated that approximately sixteen hundred students have returned. So I think that in itself speaks to how, going forward, parents are beginning to feel more comfortable and more, and less fearful with regards to having the children return in person, even if it's just for two days in the week.
Right. And, and, and you're right, Mrs. Peterson, as you well know, members of the board, community, we had an obligation from the state to be able to offer both programs to those parents to make a choice. Many of our parents in my communication were relieved because they have to go back to work. People have been out of work for almost a year. The little ones in particular are so glad to be back in school. I mean, it's just amazing that they are able to, you know, now fellowship with their, with their colleagues, excuse me, with their peers. So it works in favor for everyone who want to send their children to school. That option is now available to them. And it's a choice they made, but it's an obligation of the school district to open the schools. And I also want to say to that, Mrs. Peterson, we're going to have to remain open. We're going to remain open. We're going to remain open until June. And our plan is to continue to prepare and improve because in September, we're not sure what we're going to have. They are saying to us, they anticipate that everyone who want a vaccine should be vaccinated by September, which means everyone who works in education in Winslow Township have had an opportunity. If they want the vaccine, they will be vaccinated. And therefore, the anticipation is, we should be able to come back in a different form. You know now that they are also looking at vaccines for children. We don't know what that's going to mean for us in September. And I don't want to be redundant, but as I continue to say, you know, things are changing every day. And we just have to stay on top of the transition of what's happening with this COVID and all the things that are happening because they're going to have a direct impact on how we're going to look in September. So yes, parents who want their children back are taking advantage of the option. We anticipate it will be more than the sixteen hundred by the time we finish the survey, excuse me, the registration period. But we're in a position to offer that option, and we're glad to do so.
Thank you, Dr. Potteau. Ms. Moore?
Yep, I, I have another person.
Okay.
Okay. Is, is that what you were calling me for?
Indeed, yes, I was.
All right, Ms. Erica Wallace has another question.
Hi again, sorry. It just occurred to me, with them going back to school or, yeah, converting. So I know that they had the free lunch program that you guys were giving out during the day, which I was never able to get. But when they go back, is that what they're having? Or are we going back to paying for lunches and things like that? Should she be bringing her lunch because it is a full day? I'm not sure how that works or if I should.
Okay. Yes, I can, I can answer that. No child need to bring a lunch to school unless you absolutely want them to have one. Everyone in Winslow Township, all the children are eligible for free breakfast and lunch for the remainder of this school year. So we provide that breakfast and lunch for the young people in school every day that they're there. And the days that they are not there, on Wednesdays, you can pick up food for Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday at one of our sites. So no, you do not have to pack a lunch if you don't want to because all of the children eat free.
Oh, looking good. Sorry. The other thing was, just a parent's perspective, my kids are current, both of them are currently both virtual. They do go to different schools. One is at school five, one is at school two. And I will say, from a parent's perspective, going, going, converting to the hybrid this past marking period has been extremely difficult for anyone who stayed home and remained virtual just for the simple fact that their entire schedules have changed. So I, just from a perspective, just so you're aware, it makes it very difficult because we've been doing the same thing since September, and then everything changed. So I can't keep up with my son in fifth grade, who has a completely different schedule now. So I can't, I, I don't know what day he's doing this and what day he's supposed to log in for that because their classroom times just have changed. And then for school two, with her having special needs, her meeting times with her special, with her speech therapist or whomever she needs to meet with have changed because they need to accommodate the people that are actually physically there. So it's complicated because I changed everything on my work schedule to accommodate her schedule previously, but now that's changed. So just a parent's perspective, it may be great for the people in school, but it made it extremely hard for the people who stayed home.
I, I am, I am not aware of that in particular, so I don't want to give you any incorrect information. But I would say there should not have been, but again, I, I can't address this particularly or specifics. It should not have been that drastic of a change in the schedule. So my first question would be, what have the principal or the teacher said to you as to why that schedule has changed so drastically? Because I, there's just, of course, no way for me to be able to speak to the, to a situation that specific. But I would encourage you, if you have not, reach out to the building principal, and maybe he or she will be able to give you more specifics because I'm not able to say exactly why your schedule or your child's schedule has changed that drastically. So if you would reach out, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, definitely. And to answer your question, at least specifically for school five, it was essentially on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, they follow, even though they're virtual, they have to follow the school schedule for the full day. And then on Wednesday, they have the regular schedule that they had for virtual because everyone is virtual. So all of his class time shift because they have to meet what they're actually physically doing in school as opposed to what they were doing just virtually, if that makes sense.
Right. The initial, right, the, the initial objective was for the teacher to follow the same schedule from September to June to the end of the year so that when we transitioned back into the hybrid, that there wouldn't be that much of a transition. I would have to look into that and ask some questions as to why that happened in that manner. But it should have been very, very similar to what they would be doing right now. So that full remote schedule should be very similar. So I'm not aware of why it has such a drastic change, but I'll look into it for you. So I'm not aware of why it has such a drastic change, but I'll look into it for you. But at this point, let's say, for example, while the students are in school in the hybrid model, whatever that schedule is, that's the same schedule that the children at home should be following. But I can't answer as to why it changed drastically from full remote and now into hybrid. I can't answer that, I'm not sure. I'll look into it, but in the meantime, please reach out to the building principal or someone. Maybe they can give you more specifics, but I will research that for you.
Sure, yes, I mean, it's not a problem, we're figuring it out. You know, at the end of the day, they still got to do school, so it doesn't matter. So it's not a problem, I just wanted you to be aware that, as a, as a parent, that is just my perspective.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just something I got to work out and figure out and juggle.
Right, and I can appreciate that. And I understand the difficulties of having children at home and trying to work and do all those other things we all have to do. So I understand your concern. But for my own edification, particularly in addressing these type of issues, I'm going to look into it anyway, just so that I'm better prepared to respond if this question ever came up again. But thank you for bringing it to my attention.
Thank you for listening. Okay, we have Sonia Emin has another question.
Yes, I was just wondering if, Dr. Potte, you and your administration have begin to have any conversations about those kids who have lost some of their learning during this pandemic of hybrid and working remotely? Any discussions on what programs or services you'll be able to do to help those kids next year?
Yes, we always looking at assessing and reassessing. And we anticipate that there are going to be a need for some type of supplemental programs or something that needs to be done to enhance those young people. So yes, those conversations are being had. However, we have not selected or identified a specific program at this point. But those are the kinds of things that we'll be rolling out in the latter part of this school year in preparation for September. But yes, we are continuously looking at where we are. The principals are having those conversations in those meetings with the assistant superintendent. And yes, we are. So the answer is yes, and we will be, in fact, looking at what is in the best interest of those children.
Thank you. Cindy Skernick. Cindy?
It's like a mic is off.
Yeah, you have to unmute yourself.
It wasn't registering my, my, touching it, sorry. For the parent that called in about the change in the schedule, for Dr. Potte, I think a lot of it was the lunch schedule. Because of cleaning, we were told, because of cleaning the cafeteria in between, lunches got postponed, so that my third grader had lunch at 12:20. And now with the hybrid schedule, it got posted back to 1:15. So when that happened, he told me that he changed his mind and he doesn't want to go hybrid anymore because he likes being able to sneak down to the kitchen at 12 o'clock and get a snack. So I think that that's some of the scheduling issues.
Okay, and you may very well be correct, Ms. Skernick. And one of those kinds of issues that may turn out to be somewhat of an inconvenience. But one of the things we absolutely have to do is make sure we clean thoroughly so that we're not putting young people in a seat that someone had prior to, and we didn't take the time to do a thorough cleaning as we promised you, the community that we would do. So yes, that is very well an issue because it is required that they do clean that cafeteria thoroughly before another group of students come in. So you're absolutely right.
Thank you. I think that's it.
Okay, Ms. Moore, Ms. McLendon, before I adjourn, as the, as the chairperson of this, would you like to give us some closing remarks?
Sure, thank you, Madam President. Just want to thank the community for tuning in on the WebEx. This was something different, so thank you for bearing with us as we all try to do something different for our town hall. Hopefully, this won't be the last time that we bring you into the actual meeting so that we can see your faces, those who turned their cameras on. I also would like to thank, again, the marketing team, job well done, thank you. And also to our technology committee, technology team, Mr. Aponte and Mr. Scott, thank you so much. This was definitely a learning experience for all of us, as well as our technology team. So thank you for your continuous efforts in making this workable and successful and user-friendly. So thank you to everyone, and thank you to the board for participating with tonight's town hall.
Thank you, Mrs. McLendon, as, as Mr. Joseph Thomas would say, this has been a win-win for us all. So at this point, I'm asking for a motion to adjourn public comments. Motion to adjourn public comments.
Motion to adjourn public comments.
Back to you.
It's been moved by Ms. Martin and second by Ms. Thomas that we adjourn public comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Thank you, therefore, at this time, I would like to say again, thank you to all the public who joined us. And this has really been a fun, fun night. I'm asking at this time a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Moved by Ms. Martin, second by Ms. Thomas to adjourn the meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and good night, be safe, be well. We will see you all next week at our regularly scheduled board meeting. Good night, all.
Good night.